Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Thank you for being here. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting in the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on September 23rd, 2020 at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on September 18th, 2020 at 11:30 AM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041-551-050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum. All members are present. Members in the boardroom present are Mr. Avalos and Mr. Friedman. On Zoom participating, we have Mr. Houston, Mr. Starkey, and Mr. Dr. Lilon, excuse me. That concludes, that makes a full quorum. If we may please have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
And Father, again, we come to you, Lord, for guidance and wisdom, Lord, that you'll continue to lift us up and making the right decisions for Laguna Madre Water District and our customers and all our families, our board members. Our God, that you will lead us into this meeting with open eyes, open heart, and we can bring about the best for the water district's agenda items tonight. We thank you again. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We'll proceed to item three, invitation to the audience for public comments. I believe Mr. Baldovinos.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Victor Baldovinos with Grant Axes. I just wanted to commend staff and Fris and Nichols for a great presentation at POWC. I personally got two phone calls to commend what a great job they did, so I wanted to pass that along to the board. Obviously, sometimes we hear bad news, but we don't hear good news that often, and I wanted to share that today. Thank you.
Thank you. I also would like to compliment staff and the board members that were there representing. I think you did an excellent job representing the Laguna Madre Water District and representing the bond, future bond election. I think it was very well presented, very well stated, and also very well received. I think it was very, very, very good PR. Anything else?
Yes, sir. Mr. Sherman, I just wanted to inform the board that we recently found out that Bass and Trout Street out here in Fingers are going to be repaved by the city. We were notified. As a matter of fact, Joel was told by one of our customers there in Bass Streets, wanted to know what we were going to do about the lines, because the city being repaved in that area is going to put it in concrete, which means they're going to dig about a foot and a half. And our sewer lines are about two feet deep, and our water lines are about three feet deep. So we're going to have to go in there and re-do those lines, especially the sewer line. It's going to be about 150 feet on Bass and about 115, 120 feet on Trout.
And they just gave us notice, like we just found out?
They didn't give us notice at all. We found out from one of our customers there in Bass Street.
Yeah, the plans are signed August 10th, and we found out about a week or two ago.
This is unacceptable.
Last week, as a matter of fact. We found out last Thursday.
I'm sorry. This is unacceptable on their behalf.
So we called them up and we told them that we needed to take care of that, of the infrastructure there before they started paving. So Joel and Joey Salinas from Collections have been talking to the contractor, G and T, about holding off on those particular two streets before they do any repaving so that we can take care of it. So it's going to be a few weeks, couple of weeks, hopefully, we can get, take care of it.
So what do you think it's going to cost the district?
That's what we're trying to figure out.
Guy of all part type of a, or not to be discussed now?
Well, we just haven't done the estimate yet.
No, we're trying to get estimates, primarily what it's going to be, primarily the material. And luckily, right now, distribution has some water lines that they can use that, but that's for another project. So we're going to have to eventually replace those pipes. Collections doesn't have any, so we're trying to get those pipes that we need so we can take care of it. The problem with the collections, like I said, they're two feet underground and they're clay, they're in cement. But all that pressure, all that weight from the cement and the vehicles going in there, digging a foot and a half, they're have a pretty good chance of breaking those lines since they're clay. I just wanted to notify the board about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Staff, audience, board, Zoom? Proceed along with item four, consider discuss for possible approval the minutes of the regular meeting from September 9th, 2020. So, I was a motion made by Mr. Avalos and seconded by Mr. Houston, is that correct? Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Let's proceed with item five, General Manager's Report.
Sir, Mr. Sherman, members of board, just wanted to bring the latest report, which is from 9/17, that's Thursday, I believe, that's on the COVID-19, on the employees testing. We had 41 still the same as the previous week, with 23 coming up negative altogether and 10 positive. With pending, there is zero pending now. And we have 11 that recovered, so looks like we're okay on the list, waiting on 10 of those positives and then bringing a report back to the board.
Additional new positives?
No, no, that's the total for the whole, for the whole, I guess, since July 16th.
And what is our protocol? Are we testing like every couple of weeks or random or what's?
This one, it's just like from the previous week to today, it was only one that was pending. So we had five, one week, the next week was one, then zero, then one, and now zero back. So very minimal. Like I mentioned the last time, that we've been following the protocols and it's been working out for the district employees and their families, because they've been doing good on the reports. So that's the whole total, 11 that recovered, but it's a good report because we've got like zero this week. So just, we just keep doing what we're doing. Now, on the other report that I have is that we, I know that Mr. Victor Baldovinos had mentioned the bond, and I guess you mentioned it too, the bond election 2020 presentation by property owners who care up in the island on the 19th, and it's a good turnout. I've heard all good reports also, that the board and employees, staff did a good job there. I just want to thank you all for that, giving me a good report on that. And that's all I have on that one. The other one that I have here is the boil water notice that we had. We had a water break on Sunday, September the 13th, and it was about 3:00 PM that it started. And the employees that were out there, they stayed till about 2:00 in the morning to, they repaired everything by 11:15, 11 o'clock, 11:15, and then they covered everything back and cleaned up until about 2:00 in the morning. And they did a real good job. They completed, then we started filling up the tanks and everything back to normal. But the next day, we had to follow protocol and we sampled for bacteriologicals and the whole island. So coming back 24 hours after that, we came clear, there were no bacteriological samples that came out positive. So the employees did a good job and I applaud them and it's wanted to pass the message that on the 15th at 2:00 PM, when we made the call to see what the samples were, it was a 24-hour period. They said negatives, no, no, no positive, which is very good. The water was chlorinated, pressured and back to normal. And we had a lot of calls during that time. We actually were happy to say that the water was good to drink the next day. So that's the report that I have.
A lot of people just don't understand what the boil water notice is. I think there's just ambiguity with what it really is and what it means and why we do, or why it had to be done. It's just common occurrence.
Yeah, the Texas Commission on the-
No, I know, I know, but the public doesn't understand.
That's why I wanted to mention it, too, that they require all that, the rules, and we just have to implement them and send the notice. And this doesn't sound like a good notice, but it is preventing the public from getting sick or drinking the water that may be contaminated. We know that it was okay because we had chlorine at all times. Right after the water leak was repaired, we got samples out of the pipes that were draining out, the fire hydrants, and knowing, knowing, oh, there you are, we're in the back. So he actually did everything with employees that were there and followed through and everything came out like negative. And that's a real good report that I was happy with, because right after that, the people that were calling, asking about, do we have, can we drink the water? Is it safe to drink? So it was a good report back to them. Happy that, well, the only thing that it happened at the same spot that it's happened before. Oh, we have to shut the water off because it drained the whole tanks.
Hopefully, the bond issue will correct that.
Okay, should is.
One of the things that developed from this boil notice was that there's people that don't have accounts with us, like condo owners, that are not getting this information. Because we're sending it to the HOA, to the management company, and there's people that live in those condos that are not getting the information unless they get on Facebook or we have their email or something like that. So we need to look into that, because I did get a couple of calls about that. People said, somebody said that I got the notice three days later. That might have been because of the management company or the HOA or whatever, but we need to look into how, when these things happen, that everybody-
Did it hit the water? The Water Smart check door?
If there-
There is a, there is a method that people can use on our website. There's an email outage notification list. So people, regardless of whether they have an account or not, can put their emails into that, into that list. It's right off of our web, our front page, there's a button that says email outage notification. They click on that, it'll take them to a page, and all they have to do is just enter their email address and tell us what city they're in. And so anytime there's an outage in that city, they'll get an email that shows them that there's an outage. So that's, that's a method that somebody who's a renter or in, living in a condo can get those outage notifications if they, if they want to.
But this lady that called, one particular lady that called me, long-term owner, and she was not aware of that. Maybe she even went to her website, but we need to educate the public about the fact that there is a way to do that, because originally she was taught initially, she was told she could not have that because she did not have hold an account.
Yeah, the, yeah, the other method is the Water Smart, which we did send out both emails and text messages to anybody that has a phone number in our, in our account.
In this case, it's a homeowner, a condo, or association homeowner that did this. We just need to make sure that they know that we can do that for them, whether we send them that information through the HOA or however.
Yeah, yeah, I can get together with Victor and Alicia and maybe post something on the, on social media just to get the word out that we do have that service available for people that don't hold an account.
Right, and I did emphasize on a couple of customers that called in, to call into the main office here. I actually transferred them to sign up, because they say, well, I don't have a way to get the notice. They will, I'll send you there to customer services, they'll sign you up, and that way you can get the messages right off. So I did send a couple of them downstairs to the main customer service. But I did see that some of them didn't get it. That's why they were calling in like, hey, I hear, I hear.
We just need to educate them that there is a possibility we can do that, whether it's through an email or a text or whatever. I prefer a text only because I don't look at my email that often all day. I look at it in the morning and the afternoon. And so if I get an alert all of a sudden in the middle of the day, I might not even notice it.
Yeah, we, we try, we try to leave those text alerts for emergency situations like a boil water notice. I think that's the only other time that we've used the text alert is in a boil notice, boil water notice situation. Normally, we would send, just, just for a regular outage, we would just send it by email.
But she was, she was able to get it. I called Minnie and that's her. She would contact her and she, Minnie did, and took care of it and signed her up, and she's all good to go now. But there's lots of people like that that might not be aware that are living in the condos here. But they depend on the issue way to-
We'll get the word out on social media.
Right, we'll look into it and see what we can do better off.
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
Let's proceed with item six, Director of Operations Report.
Yes, sir. From time to time, I will be asking the managers from the different departments to present to the board a short presentation as far as their procedures or process, accomplishments that they have within their departments. Last week, we heard from the water plant, Nori Cantu. This week, I wanted to get Mr. Mark Garza to give a short presentation on the process of what takes place at the wastewater plant. The wastewater plant has 11 employees, eight of them who are operators, one senior technician, specialist, an assistant manager, and an account manager, or the department manager. And they operate four, they operate and manage four plants, four sewer plants. And although each of these plants is independent, they all are activated sludge processes. And so at this time, I'd like to go ahead and ask Mark to come forward.
Good evening. I want to talk to a little bit about what we do in the sewer plants. For the record, my name is Mark Garza. I'm the wastewater plant manager and my assistant is Omar Anthony. And well, the way, when we receive the wastewater to the sewer plant, we receive it in what's called a bar screen. And that's just, it's supposed to screen all the rags and anything that we don't want to go on inside the plant. Stay there and the operators have to manually clean that bar screen every day, Monday through Monday, everything. We have people that work Saturday and Sunday. And they clean that, throw it in a basket, and the basket goes into a container and goes to the landfill. From there, the water makes its way to the aeration basins. Inside the basins, it follows a path all the way down to the clarifiers. From the clarifiers, that's where the sludge and the water separate, right? And the water goes out into our contact chamber where it gets, it's contacted with chlorine to disinfect the water. The sludge will go back into our aeration basins to feed the microorganisms that are in our bases, you know, to keep them alive, to keep them, have them, so they can have food. We also, from the clarifier, will waste, will take that sludge out after a couple of days. We'll take it out and we'll waste it to either the drying beds or like in Isoblanca, we have a belt press or like the one you all approved, so a new belt press, right, we're going to, we'll be sending it to that. Or from there, it goes into, the operators have to shovel it out. But once it dries up in the sun, the operators have to shovel it out and they'll send it to some other containers that are, then shipped to our monofilm here in Port Isabel. And we also have an odor control system in three of our plants. The system's called pods. Those are, we covered the, where the sewer comes in, we covered those. But that's where the smells, worse, the hydrogen sulfide is real bad there, so we covered it up. And we're in the lift stations, they're injecting Microsoft. So those two things help with the gas, the hydrogen sulfide gas, you know. And we try to prevent it from spreading to the other, the surrounding neighborhoods. We also put little cherry blocks on those areas, just so it can smell a little nice, instead of that awful smell. And what else we got? We have to, all these, the TCQ regulates us, we have to report every month. It's a discharge monitoring report we do by the 20th. And we sample, we have to do sampling and testing on a daily basis. And from those numbers, at the end of the month, we get averages, and from there, we have parameters that state puts for us, right, that we can go over. So after that, if we go over, we have to report a non-compliance, which we don't want. And also time, wherever we're, we're under.
This is our floor.
Left, yes, sir. That's, that's what we have to report. And basically, that's, that's, that's all I had.
I've got a question on these systems, on these pod systems. Since we're containing as much as we can to that odor in that area where it's coming in before it gets aerated. And we, I just want to make sure that we're not, what do you call it, putting at risk the structure?
Right.
Because it's very, very corrosive. And is that something we're keeping an eye on to make sure that we're not aggressively moving or breaking down that concrete that's always coming down?
Yes, sir. We are in, you all approved last meeting to have a special, they build up that concrete, they build up the concrete. That's the need enough for it, and then they'll epoxy it. And we're just going to keep an eye on it and make sure, you know, through the years or see how long that lasts, that epoxy.
Yeah, I do remember when I went out there and looked at that particular one out there at Laguna Vista. And that was a concern that we talked about at the time, that containing it is great, because it minimizes the odor. But that, you're keeping all those gases right close to that concrete and it's not aerating as much.
It's not, and so the process is just in, it's eating up the concrete a lot.
And can, can we still walk over these, these installations? Because these are great sites. Typically, you would walk over.
Yes, because the great sit on like flat bars, things to flat bars, so I mean, there's no issue.
There's no issue with that, okay.
You can walk over them. No problem.
There was a interest that they didn't let.
Yeah, yeah, I was looking at that. And this is, I guess we're looking at buying some additional these hot systems.
Yes, we have. They, they go bad for many months.
We get, how much life do we get out of it?
According to mine factory, it was like six to nine months. We're in the process of getting the-
Are we getting the last six, nine months?
No, that's about right, yeah, about nine months out of six months.
The, I was reading through the letter from Manu, Water Technologies, and I just noticed a little typo. I think it's a little typo here on the first paragraph, which says, changes consist of dividing certain parts of the project between the present fiscal year and the next one, starting on October 1st of 2019. I think that should be 2020, 2021. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. I hope you have any other questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you. Appreciate all you do, Mark.
Personally, thank you all for approving the insurance. It's all, I mean, you really helped my family. Thank you very much.
With pleasure.
Glad we could do it. Thank you.
Thank you and your crew. Let's move along to, are we done, Robert?
That's it.
Let's move along to item seven, District Engineers Report, Wastewater Treatment Plants Permit Renewals and Wastewater Revenue Bond Program Summary Report.
All right, good evening. Yes, since we were having a presentation on the wastewater treatment operators, I went ahead and decided to keep the engineers report on the same area within our utilities. So the wastewater treatment plants, you know, the permit renewals, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. What they do is they permit us, they permit us as a, you know, sewer provider to discharge waste, and that, that's reviewed on a, every five years. And so this cycle in 2020, we had to begin our permit renewal applications in December. And we basically, you know, completed that process here over the past six months or so. So the permit for Port Isabel was issued August 14th, where they kept those discharge requirements the same, which is what, what we use as our basis for our monthly reporting for the operations. And then for Laguna Vista Sewer Plant, they issued the permit renewal for August 17th. So that's good for a five-year period as well. And then for Isoblanca, we've already done our publications. The last issuance for this notice for the second publication was July 15th. So we should be receiving our permit renewal within the next 30 days. And then with Andy Bowie's permit renewal, they were trying to do that copper limit that was really stringent. So before issuing the permit renewal, we got the language modified with a variance to do that water effects ratio. So we can basically have a less stringent copper limit, and so that's getting written into the permit renewal as well. So, so rather than hold off on the renewal, what we did is we're going to be doing an advertisement for a, basically notice of receipt of application to obtain a water quality permit, which is basically the modification for the copper and then the standard permit renewal notice. So that's going to get modified and then we'll continue with our permit renewal and then still have that time to finish up our water effects ratio at the burdensome.
You still have to do the copper?
Yeah, right. Basically, rather than have to do continual testing for three years, we're going to basically implement the results of this water effects ratio within a three-year period. You know, it's going to be probably double the current level. So that's the status of permits. And then as far as, you know, as you're aware, when we were going through the engineers report to develop our propositions for the bond election, we looked at both water and sewer, decided not to include sewer on our November bond election. But since we're going through wastewater, the, we're going to go ahead and go through that summary of what we identified as our needs from the wastewater side. That's just, it's not funded at this stage. It's going to be deferred for a future revenue. And at this point, I'll hand it over to Charles Kucherka to give that summary.
Good afternoon. I'm Charles Kucherka with Fris and Nichols Engineering. Appreciate y'all having me here tonight. I'm here with Juan Buhanos with Fris and Nichols as well. As Charles mentioned, if you remember back in December and January of this year, we had both water and wastewater projects that we were looking at for the district. And at that time, we were looking at the tax bond projects, and we moved all the water projects to the tax bond. And we remained with wastewater projects for what could be a proposed or future revenue bond. We finished up the revenue bond report last month, and we turned that into the district for record. And we just want to go through the projects that we ended up with on that, in that report. So we ended up with, the first project was the rehabilitation of 13 lift stations. These were lift station projects that, you know, when we evaluated all the lift stations, the most critical lift stations went into the current Texas, the Texas Water Development Board-funded project that was, that's currently under design. And then the remaining lift stations ended up in this revenue bond project. Project number two is improvements at the Isoblanca wastewater- Project number two is improvements at the Isoblanca wastewater treatment plant. And then project three are improvements at the Andy Bowie wastewater treatment plant. You see that the, the lift stations are throughout Charles, throughout the district. Some of them are being replaced, some of them are being rehabilitated. For replacement, we identified lift station 14 and 23. These were lift stations that either condition was too far gone or we had capacity challenges with them and they needed to be upsized. Derek Robles, lift station 14 is one of the lift stations that I believe you went and visited that site with both Charles and I. It was right around the bay, right around the corner, I don't remember the street, but it's pretty bad condition.
Did we wind up having to buy property for accommodating the new one?
Well, that's, so we haven't gone at, since.
Or are we gonna be able to fit it within that space we have?
We haven't gone to that evaluation, it's kind of like the high level, just identifying that the project needs to be completed. This is one of the wet wells that the pumps are not removable from being on the top side, which doesn't meet T C Q criteria. So the operators have to physically go inside the wet well to work on those pumps or remove those pumps, which is what's just happened with this. This is just kind of going through, the photos are a little bit small, might be hard to see, but just kind of showing the condition of some of the lift stations. We've got degrading concrete from H2S, hydrogen sulfide attack, as well as degradation of the coatings on the wet wells and the piping. So we have some corrosion issues to address. Same thing, it's just more, more of the same, only, only different, just identifying some additional lift stations that need some, need some help. One of the things we did identify on lift station 30, this is a rather small station. You can kind of see in that top left picture, it's more or less just a manhole. This is another one of the lift stations where the operators have to physically get inside to work on the pumps. Very tight space, very restricted, very confined. And so we actually identified this one to be decommissioned by installing a gravity line down Bridge Street and connecting to lift station 16. So a reduction in O and M costs by removing that lift station. At the Isoblanca wastewater treatment plant, we've identified multiple things that need to be, need to be corrected. Mark had mentioned the, the headworks and the, the bar screens. The top left photo is a picture of the, the bar screens there, you can see the gaps in them. And those are manual bar screens, so if someone has to physically go out there and clean them. And what we're proposing is choosing automatic bar screens that has mechanisms that clean it automatically, where you don't have to have an operator out there possibly working.
Do the buildings as well, packaging?
It would be, it would be a new headwork structure similar to what folks completed at the, the Corridas wastewater treatment plant.
No, I'm not about the natural degree. You know, where they collect all this stuff, there's some machines that are actually compacted and put it into blocks, is that how we look at it?
Right, yeah, there is, there's different, different mechanisms and there's different manufacturers. You know, core screens, fine, crank screens and how they, how they remove it. And usually it's conveyed and dumped directly into a dumpster. We have improvements to clarify our number three. This is very similar to what y'all are doing at, at water plant number one currently, it's just a wastewater application. We have improvements to the aeration basin, replacing the, the return activated sludge pumps and then improving some of the hydraulics there. That should make for a better effluent. And then we have identified to replace the effluent V-notch weir. The V-notch weir is a mechanism that helps you measure your discharged water. They being able to know known coefficients, you can, you can understand how much water is going through there. This V-notch weir is undersized, so when you start getting higher flows, you're unable to actually identify how much flow you're, is coming out of the plant. So we identified that for replacement. The Andy Bowie wastewater treatment plant improvements, again, this is another improvement. This photo here is a grit wall, a grit wolf grit removal system that, that is currently on loan to the district. That'll be returned to the district or returned to the, to the manufacturer, which I think is currently being coordinated. And what we're proposing for the Andy Bowie wastewater treatment plant is replacing the headworks with grit removal. Very similar to what has already been approved at the Port Isabel plant. So overall, total project total is right at $12 million for, for all three projects. Are there, are there any questions?
I do have a question on the, on that V-notch weir. When you're talking about widening, that it might need to be widened, that the discharge area might be, have to be widened. Are we talking about dredging? What are we talking about as far as widening that area?
It's, it's really a chance, it's, you know, it's all it is, water flowing through a channel and then running past the V-notch weir and then goes out to the effluent. So there's different mechanisms, I don't know what.
So it's not actually widening the area for the district?
It'll be completely modified, I mean, because we're talking about modifying that concrete structure, so it'll likely be a new, new concrete structure. Whether or not, I'm not sure if we recommend it to go back to the V-notch weir or if we're looking at ultrasonic or some other measuring device. But we did identify it to be.
Comments, questions? The only reason I bring it up is because of, we have an estimated cost and I know that anytime we're gonna have to dig up dirt.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that.
Okay, it's definitely following the lane side. Yeah, it's just a change in treatment process. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles.
Yeah, this is the engineer's report.
Let's move along to item eight, consider and discuss for possible approval of change order number two. Final with cornet construction for the Tarpen Street Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project.
All right, so, so we finalized quantities for the utility work that was done at Tarpen Avenue and Island Avenue. And so this change order is just to reduce the quantities, so we're reducing that contract amount by $87,389.80. So just, you know, recommend your approval.
Motion made by Mr. Avalos.
Second.
Second, was that Mr. Houston?
Yes.
Are all those in favor?
Aye.
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 They are, any opposed? None, motion carries, thank you. Let's move along to item nine, consider and discuss for possible approval of engineering amendment number two with Friesen Nichols, Inc. For lift station rehabilitation, T W B, T W D B project 73730.
All right, yeah, y'all go ahead and before I introduce Charles back on, onto the podium, just it's regarding lift stations one and 37 in Laguna Vista wastewater treatment plant, service area, where we did have failures, you know, in the condition of the pumps that forced us to accelerate this construction in a separate bid package from the remaining part of the job. And so I'll go ahead and let Charles explain the details of what it impacted.
Thank you again, I'm Charles Kucherka with Friesen Nichols Engineering. The amendment that we, we have in front of y'all tonight is for additional services through the Water Development Board loan, lift station improvements projects. What we did is we had some additional services. One is that we, during the design, we identified that the Port Isabel wastewater treatment plant lift station was in poor condition with the concrete degradation due to the hydrogen sulfide gases. And so that, that lift station was kind of moved up on the city's criticality list. And so we brought it into this project. And so we added the, the design and rehabilitation of that project, which will include rehabilitation of the concrete that has been degraded, re-coke up well. And we're also revising the discharge piping to be above grade rather than in, in a vault. Right now it's in a vault, it's a very confined space, difficult to work on. And so we're actually changing the design where it'll be a little bit more operator friendly in the future for, for the operators to work on. The other one was that we added in the removal replacement of the obstructed gravity main on Kikeman Road. I believe the, the story behind that is when they were installing new, new power poles and they pumped grout, but they accidentally clipped one of y'all's laterals. And so when they were pumping grout, they filled y'all's wastewater line with grout, is that correct? Yep. So what we brought that into the project as well to include replacing some of that, that line. One thing to consider is that every time we do make a change as part of the Water Development Board loan, we have additional administrative services because we have to identify the project and send them exhibits to let them identify that we don't need additional environmental. So we didn't have to do an additional environmental, but we have to coordinate with them to prove that we don't need additional environmental. So we have some additional coordination there as well as every time we add or change a project, we have to update the engineering feasibility report, which includes, you know, documentation on the project that we're proposing, as well as providing them opinions, probable costs and things like that. So there's some additional administrative efforts every time we make a change. One of the larger items that was part of this amendment was splitting out lift station one and lift station 37 as a separate bid package. That was not anticipated when we, we originally scoped the project. We were gonna bid all the lift stations, all in one, one plan set, one document, one bid phase, one construction phase. So by splitting that out, we have additional services on the design side. But also we have separate bid phase and a separate construction phase that we have to manage. So that was additional services.
That's just because of the timeline of getting everything done.
Well.
Or these two anyway.
Yeah, I think the criticality on those was that they, they had some pumps that were, that went out. And so we wanted to move those up because, and, and we've already gone through the bid phase and naturally the award is on the agenda tonight for those packages. As far as where we are on the timeline of the, the overall project is that we're on schedule to submit the 100% sets to the Water Development Board next week for review. And then they have 30 days to review it. And then, so we're looking at hopefully advertising needs the overall contract towards the end of the year, maybe early next year, but hopefully towards the end of this year. And so by splitting this out and taking care of lift station one and 37, we're actually kind of gaining three or four months of construction time for those projects. Are there any questions concerning this?
All this within the 2019 revenue.
Can you walk, can you walk me through the money real quick again? Charles, on the, on the page I'm looking at, I see 1,037,772 dollars, the total authorized amount. Is that what we're looking to approve tonight?
You're looking to approve the amended amount, which is 140,990. And.
Find that, I don't see that in my hand now, sorry.
Okay.
Talk me through that.
Table.
There's a tab, it's under tab nine, the first page on tab nine.
Yes, sir. And so where do I find the $100,000 amendment? I see the table, professional service authorized amount, amended amount, total authorized amount, that's the table I'm looking at.
The amended amount column at the bottom is the, is what the amended.
Understood. And then I believe Alex already asked, this is money that we already had allocated for this particular arrangement regarding these two lift stations, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And again, it's costing 140,000 more because why?
Because we had to, well, we, we split out lift sta, well, we added projects in that were not included in the original design scope. And then we split out lift station one and 37 into a separate bid package, separate plan set, separate spec set, separate bid phase, separate construction phase. In addition, we also provided an alternate design for lift station 37 to use two different pump types. This was to increase competition between pump manufacturers. So to help improve bid prices.
So am I reading this correctly? The actual construction for this is 35,560, but the design is 98,000?
Correct, the design, design includes adding that additional lift station, doing the gravity main replacements, doing a separate bid package, a design package for lift station one and 37, and the bid based services for that separate bid package. And then the 35,000 is just, is just the cost to manage the separate contract during construction and provide inspection for that.
I understand it now, thank you, Charles.
Yes, sir.
Does this mean that there's money that comes out somewhere else down the line? Because we're spending it here instead.
Yeah, it would be coming out of contingency within the, the money balance. Yeah, but basically we have a contingency line item, which would cover this expense.
Are you clear, Doctor?
You know what, the mic didn't work there. I, I, after I asked my question, I didn't hear an answer.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, what I'm, what I'm saying is in, we have a contingency line item in our budget for this revenue note. And so that's where this expense will be, it'll be, we'll be assigning contingency to this expense.
What does that mean?
Contingency is just a general line item for, you know, for, for project changes or, you know, the unforeseen conditions. That's already included within the budget. And so rather than, than, you know, contingency is just, you know, in our budget for fund 39, our contingency was 500,000 for this coming fiscal year. So basically out of that 500,000 contingency, we'll allocate 140,990 to this amendment.
Sure, so contingency is just a nice way of saying, money we hope we don't have to spend, but maybe we will. And now we're saying, yep, we gotta spend it.
Correct.
My understanding is we're breaking this out of another project, correct? This work or one and 37 at least?
Well, yeah, it's, it's out of the, well, it's out of the, yes, the, the remaining job, which is our revenue note from T W D B. We're looking at bidding the rest of the job towards the end of the year.
So if there's management fees to manage one and 37 here, doesn't that mean there should be less management fees in the original thing because it's not gonna be in it now? One and 37 won't be part of that package? Or am I understanding the process incorrectly?
So when we packaged all the lift stations together, what you, you get is an economy of scale. And when we split that out, we, we lose the economy of scale because now what we're having to do is kind of more or less everything double. If you're looking at from the coordination with the contractor side, we'll have two pre, pre-construction meetings. We'll have construction meetings with two different contractors at two separate times. We'll have to review two separate pay requests, review some metals, work through issues with two different contractors. Whereas before, we did have an economy of scale of working across all the lift stations at one time with one contractor. And so that's why it's a, a additional cost. If you're looking at the actual project management planning costs, the way I, the, we broke out the table in the amendment matches up with the budgets, the budget categories per the Water Development Board. And so when we talk about the project management planning, those were the additional costs to coordinate these project changes with the Texas Water Development Board to incorporate these changes, update the engineering feasibility report, work through the environmental categorical exclusion for the project. And so it's not a reduction, it's just, it's extra effort to get to this point.
Okay, great, that's a, that's a really good answer to say no, but well said for sure. Quick question.
Be prepared next time.
Yeah, no, I mean, well said. Scott, can, can I just ask you or any other board members have, because I can't remember all the, all the lift stations and when we didn't, didn't talk about them. When did we approve to accelerate the schedule on lift stations one and 37?
I can't directly answer that.
Probably in July is when that discussion.
It's been a couple of months.
Okay.
Not exactly sure of the date, but it's been at least a couple of months or so.
I think we can take great.
It has been discussed, yes, I do remember that, I don't remember the timeframe.
There's a lot of lift stations, I appreciate it, thanks for clarifying those answers, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Is that closed? Any other question? I don't have any. This is a.
This is an action item.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval by Dr. Alon.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Avalos. For all those in favor.
Aye.
They are? None are opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Let's move along. Discuss item ten. Consider and discuss for possible award of construction for lift station numbers one and thirty seven rehabilitation. Bid number LS dash two zero dash zero seven dash zero one.
Very good. Again, I'm Charles Kucherko with Freesia Nichols Engineering. As we've been discussing the lift station one and thirty seven package, we received received bids on this project on September sixteenth. And we had five five bidders on the project. Their base bid amounts ranged from one point four million to five to five hundred eighty nine thousand. Our opinion of probable cost was eight hundred and sixteen thousand. As I mentioned in the previous conversation, we had a base bid amount for providing self priming pumps, and we provided an alternate design using submersible pumps to add competition to the project. And that is what is incorporated in the alternate bid item. When we received bids, we 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 had an apparent low bidder of Southern Trenchless Solutions for a base bid amount of five hundred eighty nine thousand three hundred twenty five dollars. In evaluation of that base bid amount, Charles and I evaluated it, and we thought that 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 price was pretty low. And so we contacted the owner of Southern Trenchless Solutions and to see if they were good with that bid amount and to verify there were no errors. And they took a day and they reviewed their bid and they identified that, in fact, they did make errors and they overlooked some major scope items, and they indicated that they would not be able to do the project for the base bid amount. They came back to us and they indicated that if we were to award alternate number one for a hundred and ten thousand, that they would be able to complete the project as designed and as bid. Seeing that their total price of alternate bid number one plus their base bid is six hundred ninety nine thousand three hundred twenty five, which still makes them the low bidder and the best value for the district. We recommend awarding the project to Southern Trenchless Solutions for six hundred ninety nine thousand three hundred and twenty five dollars.
So moved.
There's a motion made by Mr. Starkey.
Mr. Houston.
Mr. Houston, excuse me.
Second.
And a seconded by Mr. Avalos. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Are there any opposed? None? The motion does carry. Thank you.
And we save a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars?
Yes. Thank you. Let's move along to item eleven. Consider and discuss for possible approval of petition of the town of Laguna Vista for the annexation of twenty three point zero two acre tract in the town of Laguna Vista, Cameron County, Texas, also known as Laguna Vista Eco Park subdivision.
All right. So this is a petition submitted by the town of Laguna Vista, who's the owner of the entire subdivision tract for twenty three point oh two acres. It has been flatted where lot two is where the Equitourism Center is currently under construction and to be transferred to Cameron County. And lot one is a twelve point eight nine acre lot of just really for economic development, where the development is really unknown at this time. But the request here in this petition is to get the entire subdivision annexed into the district. And with that, the annexation fee schedule, once it's known by the type of development, to become due at that time in the development.
We're saying that public versus private?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Like the way the Article five on this petition discusses fee schedule. And so we've, as as previously discussed, we're agreeing agreeing to waive the charges for Cameron County's development, the ten acres. And then there is one line on here where it says water rights charge and wastewater and wastewater buying charges may be applicable for lot one at time of development. And so I guess the key word being may as in permissive versus a should or a shall. So that that may be one specific word to consider.
Yeah, that was the only concern I had with the document itself. But I did have a question also for for Mr. Osuna.
Yes, sir.
Yes. The question I have is, as I was reading through your minutes, where you guys talked about this, I'll bring this forth. It says that the term annexation does not mean municipal annexation. So what kind of annexation are we?
Oh, I think there may have been a question as to whether or not we were talking at the council level about municipal annexation. In other words, bringing territory into the city limits. And I made sure to distinguish between that, which we weren't talking about, and this, which is which is our request that that certain property that we own be included within within the cashman area of Laguna Madre Water District. It's governed under a different set of laws.
So there's a different term for it?
No, both the statute uses the term annexation for both things, but they're but they're entirely different processes. And I think it just so happened that we were talking about municipal annexation. And so there may have been some confusion at that meeting. And so that was just there to clarify that.
This property is already annexed by the town.
It's already within the city limits under a what what do you call it, chapter forty three annexation under the Texas Local Government Code. This is an entirely different process.
Yeah, that's the only concern I had, that that last line.
Okay.
About the water rights and water, water and wastewater buying charges may be applicable for lot one at the time of development. And since we have no clue what's going to go on there, I think it's just best interest of the district to be clear that whoever whatever development does go in there, that they do, that they are affiliated for those buying charges.
No, absolutely. And I believe the city manager has has submitted a version executed that has the word shall.
Yeah, I don't have it in my.
Oh, okay. That was our intention to do that.
Yeah, so if we're in transit, so that's the intent of, yeah, we're modifying the motion for for shall.
We we were, we had, we had requested that the Phoebe wave for the governmental purpose land and of course any private development.
Yeah, because they came before us actually sometime back, and we had agreed at that time to wave for them, for their project and what they were doing. But for whatever reason, and maybe you might know, they were never, we would never did that. We never separated those ten acres from the rest of it. And so when I got this in front of us and I said, well, now they want us to build a whole twenty three. And I was concerned at first that that we were putting them, you know, kind of throwing them under the county level because we'd already agreed to that. But for whatever reasons, I'm okay with it as long as we make any future development there on the.
For private.
For private purposes, that they do have the responsibility to come to the district with buying terms.
And that's something that can be passed on to the private developer that the people are going to benefit.
Yeah, because it's not going to cost the city. It's just a house of development. Right.
That's our intention.
Okay. And so if you don't have an issue with that.
No, 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 we. It should be on the way.
Okay. Yeah, that was my only concern. So whatever you guys want. Any other questions you might have?
I don't have any. I think it's great. It's exciting to see it happening.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay. This is an action item.
So moved.
It was a motion made by Mr. Starkey and seconded by Mr. Avalos. For all those in favor.
Aye.
They are? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move along.
Scott, real quick, I got to sign out and then sign back in. So feel free to proceed. But if Orlando could let me back in here in thirty seconds when I try and sign in.
Stated for the record.
Thank you, sir.
Do we want to wait till he gets back on to go the next item? Thank you, gentlemen. Have a nice evening. Do we want to wait till he gets back on to proceed or just keep going?
I think we can keep going.
Okay. Texas to item twelve. Consider and discuss for possible approval of the order setting date for public hearing of the petition for annexation.
Yeah, part of our process for annexation, the state law requires a public hearing. So this is the notice to proceed with that. Yes. Well, just when we advertise a thirty day notice or so basically, I'm just proposing scheduling the meeting before our regular board meeting to have it at five o'clock on October fourteenth and then continue with a regular meeting at five thirty.
Five twenty five P M.
Yeah, exactly. It's going to be a pretty short public hearing.
Okay. So action item.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey or motion made by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Avalos. For all those in favor.
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. So we'll schedule that five twenty five or five twenty nine P M for the regular meeting. Unless we need a workshop or anything before.
No, I mean, it's.
I mean, just to discuss anything else or.
I think five twenty five should be sufficient.
Okay. Let's move along to item thirteen. Director of Finance report.
Gentlemen, I just wanted to advise you that we're entering into the engagement letter with our auditor, Car Riggs and Ingram. We did a multi-year agreement when we awarded the 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 bid to them the last time in twenty eighteen. So this is just a a copy of the engagement letter just for your information.
So moved.
Yes.
Second.
Was a motion made by Mr. Starkey. Mr. Houston and seconded by who?
Me.
Mr. Starkey. For all those in favor. They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you.
And also wanted to let you know that we had proposed a flexible spending arrangement for our employees with the health plan. But due to the the limitations of of five hundred dollars on the F S A, we we opted to go with the H R E, which is a similar health savings account. So that we can do the whole the full one thousand dollars that the board had agreed to. The only difference on this, as far as we're concerned, is that it's not a use it or lose it like it was with the F S A. The the employees can keep this and roll it over until they've used up the funds.
Well, that's good.
And that's all. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Let's move along to item fourteen. Consider and remove from the table the following item table with the regular meeting on September ninth, twenty twenty. Consider and discuss.
So moved.
Motion to remove by Mr. Starkey. Seconded by Mr. Avalos. For all those in favor.
Aye. Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. Off the table. Moving on to item fifteen. Consider and discuss for possible approval of restoring section one point four point eight penalties for late fees corresponding to the service policies of the Laguna Madre Water District due to the COVID nineteen.
So the the reason that I'm bringing this back to the board is because when the board made the action to restore the the disconnections for service, we at that time, we decided to waive penalties for thirty days. Now, it's it's been past thirty days now, and I haven't yet restored restored the penalties. I wanted to make sure that I I I my understanding was that the board wanted to look that over again to to see if they were going to extend it or not. So I haven't yet restored the the penalties on past due amounts. So I wanted to bring that to the board, let you know what the what the status of that is. I included some some charts in in your packet that shows how the past due amounts have have changed over time, beginning in May through now through through September. And you can see that that those amounts fluctuate over the past few months. But currently, the the past due amounts are have have come have come down significantly.
What staff recommendation on the issue?
So my recommendation is that we give the customers at least thirty days. Let me send out a letter to advise people that any amounts past due will be subject to to penalties on a certain date. Let's let's say November first. Anything that's outstanding in past due will be subject to penalties. And that would be my.
Extending this till November is what you're saying?
Yes.
Without, I mean, the penalties will begin of November.
That's right.
For Claire.
Would begin, yes, on the.
So we're penalty free until November.
I make a motion. That starting November first, we.
Resume.
Follow. Yeah, we resume penalties standards, and we will do written notices after thirty days of said penalty. I believe that's what he was trying to say.
Yes, I'll send out the notices immediately, letting customers know that in in thirty days, we'll start penalizing anything that's past due.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey. Who is the second?
Dr. Alon.
Dr. Alon. For all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
They are? Are there any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move along to item sixteen. Consider and discuss for possible approval of request for budget transfer to capital bond projects.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Dr. Alon. For all those in favor.
Aye.
For the rec for the record, it was seconded by Starkey.
Okay. So it was, yes, for the record, so all are in favor. Thank you. Moving along. It's hard. It's hard to kind of hear decipher sometimes.
I'm the country guy.
Item seventeen. Consider and discuss for possible approval of workers' compensation renewal.
The current insurance is going to expire. Last year, we went out for bits to to get the worker compensation insurance. So this year, we are recommended to renew for twenty one thousand nine hundred and sixty three with Texas Mucho. Last year, we pay thirty eight thousand. So this is the receiving.
Starkey makes a motion to approve.
That was a motion made by Mr. Starkey and seconded by Mr. Avalos. For all those in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Star, none opposed? Motion carries. Move along to eighteen. Consider and review expenditures from September first, twenty twenty through September fifteenth, twenty twenty. Does everyone acknowledge? Have questions or comments?
Moving. Acknowledged.
That was acknowledged by Mr. Houston and Dr. Alon. Does everyone take the time to acknowledge and agree? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's move along to item nineteen. Adjournment. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. The meeting is adjourned at six thirty seven P M. I encourage everyone to stay safe, and we appreciate and enjoy your evening. Thank you.